All right, I've got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting order today, Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, we'll probably have select and howdy good one, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Dewitt, howdy, uh, Gavin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town manager Jesse Dunbar, town clerk Sarah Abbott. Um, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from March twenty-fifth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-fifth.
I think we're not there, Mackenzie.
Just kidding.
I'm just kidding. I motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty-four.
Good shot, though.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Me too.
Okay, next we have approval of warrants. We have warrant ninety-three for one thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-six cents, ninety-four for six thousand five hundred five dollars forty cents, ninety-five for one hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents, ninety-six for fourteen thousand nine hundred ten dollars and ten cents, ninety-seven for fifty-four thousand one hundred twelve dollars sixty-eight cents, ninety-eight for fifteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants ninety-three through ninety-eight.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants ninety-three through ninety-eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next we have regular business. First thing we have is our FY twenty-three audit. We have Jim Wardman here with us to present it.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're all still here. The world didn't end this afternoon. I notice when I put the presentation together that I handed out, uh, we were here on a tent last year, April tenth, so you picked up two days.
Yeah.
We're really moving in the right direction. So, yeah, we've got our report. Uh, I think we're, you know, I don't think we've got any added pages this year for a change. I think we're the same number of pages, but still seventy-two pages of material here. So we'll move through, uh, go back, bounce back and forth between the handout and the report itself. Everybody's got a fresh copy brought down with us, so we'll go on. Uh, pages one through three, our opinion letter is a unmodified or clean opinion stating that your financial statements and related disclosures are a fair presentation for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I may have said this two years before, uh, these reports, um, I think this changed last year. This is the second year of this format, I think. You know, these reports used to be one page, the opinion letter was one page. Now we're up to three. Typically, if you've got to be beyond two pages, you had some issues, uh, you know, things that were needed to be addressed in the opinion. Even now, the standard clean opinion is a three-page report. And if you get into the federal funding, then they get even longer than that. But again, you have a clean opinion basically saying these financial statements are a fair presentation for this past fiscal year. Pages four through eight, management's discussion and analysis. So you can pick up a lot of the financial highlights for the year by looking at this information here on these five pages. If you don't want to read the whole seventy-two-page report, uh, you can pick up a lot here. On page eight, uh, here's, top half of that page is a lot of the budget versus actual general operating fund, positive and negative variances between the budget and the actual, so you can pick up on some of the, um, major variances there. Back on page four, the fund highlights paragraph in the very middle of page number four talks about your ending total combined fund balances were four million twenty-one thousand seven eighty-two for this past year. And that is, uh, another amount, one million one hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars is your general under signed fund balance or your surplus of the year. Approximately fifteen percent of your expenses for the year. The handout that I gave to you, um, shows where you've been for the last three years as well as a few other towns. You've got Bar Harbor, here, Trenton, Castine, and you, uh, Tremont's a third town down. And you can see you've been in that. You've been, you've been growing your surplus a little each year. Uh, back from, back in two thousand twenty-one, you're a million thirty-four thousand. Now you're up to one million one seventy-four. Been staying right in that fifteen percent range of your expenses. So I think you've been, uh, kind of staying pretty consistent with that. Each year, as we'll see, as we get into this a few more pages, that you've been budgeting, the use of some of your surplus, but then putting back in a comparable amount, comparable amount, a little bit more actually each year. So your surplus has been going up some each year. Again, you know, main municipal says here at the very bottom of this, of this page in the handout, they have their recommendation as far as what you should have for municipality, the absolute minimum of ten to twelve percent. So you guys are a little bit higher than that. Not up in the range of like Castine is, you know, they're eighty percent of their, um, of their expenses for the year. They, they maintain their surplus. As you can see, you're running pretty comparable to both Trenton and Bar Harbor in terms of a percentage of your, of your expenses. Uh, financial statements begin on page nine. Um, pages nine and ten, these are your first, um, talked about them together. These are your first two required financial statements. These are called the government-wide financial statements, where everything that the town has for assets, liabilities, and fund balances is all lumped in here. So we've got a lot of assets, for example, that you can't necessarily use to pay bills with, like parking lots and roads and vehicles and buildings and things like that, um, but they are required to be in this first exhibit that we have here. And in your liabilities, where you think about what do we need to pay on our next warrant over the next month or so, or what do we need to pay, uh, over the next year? In the liabilities, we have a lot of long-term liabilities here that are required to be put on these financial statements as well. But beginning on page eleven through the remainder of the financial statements here, we're looking at things that are, um, reported in the same fashion that you do your budget, and you look at your internal accounting records during the course of the year. You're looking at your budget versus actual statements and so forth. Notes to the financial statements begin. Notes to the financial statements begin on page forty-four. And there, uh, is roughly forty pages. Pages, uh, fourteen through forty-four are notes to the financial statements. So you've got, you know, thirty-one pages of notes. And they're all required disclosures here by various governmental accounting statements, board statements, talking about the accounting policies that the town follows, uh, as far as, you know, your assets, your long-term debt, your capital assets. There's a number of pages in here related to pension disclosures and other retiree benefits like life and health insurance. Really have added a lot of thickness to these reports over the last few years. So I'll pass on those, let you read those in your own leisure. And, uh, pick up financial statements again on page number forty-five. This is your budget versus actual operating statement for your general fund. And if you look at your, uh, budget columns, there were some minor differences between, um, the original budget, the final budget. So you made some budget modifications there this year. Um, but in both, uh, the original and final budget, the plan was to bring your surplus down by a hundred and fifty-five thousand. You've been having the very bottom line of those budget columns. So the plan was to bring surplus down by a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Actual results were an increase in surplus of fifty-two thousand eight thirty-one. So an overall favorable budget variance of, uh, two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for the year. So we've got some pages that follow after we get past another seven or eight pages of pension and, and other post-employment benefit disclosure. But picking up on page number fifty-six, we're looking at your budget versus actual revenues. And we're, you know, breaking them into more detail. So we've got final budget versus actual, um, on pages fifty-six and ending on page fifty-seven. And overall, you increased your, um, you know, your favorable budget variance was eighty-seven thousand nine ninety-two. You can pick that up on page fifty-seven in the fireworks. And you can see the single biggest, um, addition to this figure was your auto excise tax. Came in ninety-two thousand seven sixty-four above budget. We've pretty much seen that across the board with municipalities that we are. Another strong year for excise taxes. Then the next three pages, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty. All right, now we're looking at the expenses, budget versus actual. And the, uh, page sixty, the fire right-hand column, we follow that right down to the bottom of that page, number sixty. Overall, um, expenses came in a hundred and nineteen thousand eight thirty-nine below budget. So another favorable variance there. And then page sixty-one is your net change in your surplus balance for the year. Again, revenue for eighty-seven, nine ninety-two, above budget, expenses, one nineteen eight thirty-nine below budget, for a total budget surplus of two oh seven eight thirty-one. You use a hundred and fifty-five thousand to reduce your tax commitment, uh, for a net increase for the year of fifty-two thousand eight thirty-one. That's, so basically summarizes your operating activity for the year. The next ten or so pages are your other funds other than your general operating fund, um, some of your, uh, various reserves that the town has. Capital improvement projects on page sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine, in more detail, scheduled by A C I D funds. We've got some trust funds at the end. Final page seventy-two, scheduled expenditures of federal awards. It's here only because the Department of Education requires that we disclose this. Normally, we'd only have it in here if a government expended over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But in Maine, the Department of Education says we have to have this exhibit in here, even if federal expenditures are zero. We still need to have this page in here, so, um, that is everything. Any questions? I know I moved through pretty quickly, but if you want any questions, you can take those.
Looks good.
And Lauren Kelly is, uh, Kelly has worked on your audit for decades now.
Don't say it that way, she says.
But no, she's been many, many years, yes, she's worked on your audit and, you know, mancy engagement and the, the report and everything. And, um, I think everything went very well this, this year.
It did. Jesse and Jesse do a great job. It's nice and organized and clean.
We don't always say that. It's not always.
Thank you very much. No, it looks good. I'm glad it came out. We were anticipating to add something to our reserve after cutting that one fifty for taxes. Looks good. Yeah, looks good to me.
Thank you. You have a few amendments?
Yeah, thank you very much for doing it.
I make a motion to accept and file the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and thank Mr. Wadman for attending this evening. Ken Kelly.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and file the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and to thank Mr. Wadman, um, for attending this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a liquor license renewal for the seafood catch. I don't see anybody here from the seafood catch. And this is just, uh, same as last year.
Yep.
I motion to approve the application of seafood catch located at forty-seven Shore Road for a state on-premise restaurant liquor license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application for seafood catch located forty-seven Shore Road for a state on-premise restaurant liquor license. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, now we have lobster boat races. Jesse, do you want to start with that, or I know Ellen's here as well.
Yep, I can start off. Um, so over the last couple of years, um, there's been some discussions, and we've had a couple, um, non-official discussions about, uh, whether or not the town should create a lobster boat race committee to help handle the planning and execution of the annual Bass Harbor lobster races. Ellen is, uh, was involved in last year's, um, event, um, basically the shore side. Uh, it means, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Um, the shore side portion of the event, um, and is also in favor of speaking with you about having a more formal town committee, um, to help with planning and, um, collecting the donations and hanging ones, giving them. Just to help make a more successful, greater, um, event for the town.
More organized.
More organized. So I'll let Ellen pitch in.
Yes, I just felt like there was a lack of communication. Um, the person that's been working the last few years was a little flying by the seat of his pants, and I would rather have it ready earlier. And last year, we accepted, uh, cash donations that he then went and bought prizes with. Um, and I feel like it needs to be more than just his bank account doing that, uh, like, if the town, if we could do it under the town, it would feel better to me. I just don't know how the town feels about boat races. I'm happy to, you know, get donations and get it organized and line stuff up, but I just kind of feel like I'm floating out here now because I can't go hold him anymore. Um, so I just wanted to know how the town felt about boat races and, I mean, uh, I really don't know how to do everything he does. Um, like the insurance and Eric, he did the, the finish line and all that, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's, back like probably ten years ago when it started, roughly, I would say. That, it was pretty big then.
It's gonna be fifteen years.
Fifteen, wow, that's been a long time, time flies, yeah. And, uh, I remember Scotty and Foger were the first two that went around and got a whole bunch of prize. They had a ton of prizes. And that was a huge turn up for a few years when they had the fireworks and the whole, the whole thing. Um, yeah, and it does seem like it's kind of dwindled out a little bit, so.
Well, and I think COVID affected it.
Yeah.
He did keep it going for the past three years, which was great to keep it going.
Yep.
But I feel like we got good momentum last year of bringing stuff back. Uh, we really liked Tremont to have the boat races. We don't have much that we do here as a community. So I would be very sad if it just kind of tripled the wedding.
Yep. Yeah, and I think that there'll be plenty of people that will want to chip in and help. Um, maybe not be on a committee, but to help, you know, set up the, like, setting the course. Cooley's always set the course, um, no matter what, and, and it's, it's pretty, you know, he can do that pretty quickly. Yeah, Eric's been doing the finish line. Um, yeah, it's not the insurance part and stuff. You handle most of that anyway. And you have to take, uh, someone has to be, uh, meet with the coast guard the day before or a couple of days before the race. And it's pretty, pretty basic stuff, so.
Doesn't the harbor master usually do that? I mean, he's.
He should be the person who's organi-, or who's in charge as well, so.
Involved, yeah.
Yeah, it should be someone.
I, and I've had a quick conversation with, um, both Foger and Scotty. And they were complaining, you know, seemed to be a board with a committee. I guess they, um, recommended that in the past before they got, you know, before they stopped doing it. They thought it would work better if there was a town committee at the time.
And I talk to a lot of people that are happy to help out and, you know, maybe the group or whatever, all kinds of people want to help.
Yep. No, and I know the only thing, you're gonna have to, I don't know how it will work. I guess just one person will be responsible because they want one person to be the responsible, like, to get the phone calls and,
Correct.
the, you know, whether people should come and whether they can come and whether, if it's like a fog or whatever, someone has to call it off. And so there'll have to be one person kind of in charge of that.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, it'd be good to have, have it built back up again. I'm all for it.
Yeah, I like it too.
Sounds good.
Yep.
You taking on the phone calls, Ellen?
Yeah.
I know, uh, John Johansson, and I can give him a call too and just mention he's in charge of the boat races from everybody.
Was he here? Who was the person that was here last year? Somebody was here with, it wasn't just Colin, it was.
Yeah, yeah, he's always there. He's.
Yes, and he was the one, I think, that was deciding whether the races would want to be called.
Yes, yep, yep. He usually would work with whoever and, yep. But I could mention, well, as soon as you come up with a contact of who is gonna be in charge of that, then.
Sounds like you're volunteering, dude.
No. No.
Have they set the date for this yet?
Yes.
It's the twenty-third. So we need to move. Well, I've already been talking about T-shirts. Like, I've been doing stuff already. I was having my phone calls and texts answered and then not anymore. So I'm like, I'm not trying to take it. I don't, I don't want this for like my thing. I just want to make sure it happens. And I could have just bullied through and done it myself and got my friends to help, but I feel like the town should be involved or at least know what's going on.
So how will we handle the financial part of it, Jesse? Will we have to?
So I would be, I mean, we'd probably just do it like we did the one seventy-fifth, um, event. The town accepted donations and kept track of what that was and, you know, any associated costs, you know, with it. But it was fairly simple. Um, this, in this case, if it's an annual event, then you probably at some point create a specific reserve to keep the funds and to roll over year to year.
I'm just thinking of like, like she's saying, order in the T-shirts and stuff like that. Now you're gonna need money to do that.
What we did with the one seventy-fifth was it just came out of the contingency.
Okay, yep.
And still the donations.
That was what we did last year, was save enough money out to buy the T-shirts. And then the rest of it was donated to the Tremont Helper Fund, which they don't have any fundraising for that.
Yep.
Um, so there should be some money to get T-shirts on there.
Yeah, and it would be nice to have the, whatever proceeds come in. Then you could look at it after and decide where you want to put it and if you want to use it to help push more for the next year, build it up a little bit, you know. And I know before, there was a lot of people who donated, like, for the fireworks. There were, I know the fireworks, Keith, just monkey ears and don't, yeah. But anyway, if there were fireworks, there were a lot of people who donated that night before, a lot of restaurants, businesses, stuff like that. Yeah, it'd be good, and I know.
I guess if it was the Bass Harbor days, like, the whole weekend.
Yeah, and that's.
People used to do a car show again and all that.
Yeah, Bonnie, um, had mentioned before about doing the lobster bake again. And we had talked about it'd be nice to have it the day before the boat races. So that'd be better weather then, hopefully, and, well, everybody's making a weekend of it. So how are you gonna put together? How many people? Five, like we usually do?
I think five is probably good.
Yeah.
Do you have time to send out like a fundraising letter, what you did for the fundraising?
Yeah.
I have a letter we filled out last year for T, money just for the T-shirts and then for either the money towards gifts or people, but also donate physical stuff from the businesses. And, uh, we, we raised a lot of money by only going from here and driving pretty much, so.
I was saying, a lot of the other races do get a sponsor, like a fridge race, so there's a business sponsors. There's five hundred bucks to the, um, a lot of them split, like, the five hundred goes to a person, I think.
And we did banners with all the people that did those donations and they announced them before the races.
Yeah, it was, I know the first couple of years, it was ridiculous how many, I mean, they had thirty, forty thousand all sorts of prizes back then.
They were going so far away.
Yeah, no, they were. They were going every, because I remember Fuddruckers had just opened up. Scotty said he sent him in and he ended up with a couple of cheeseburgers. That was a deal. And, uh, but they, they went everywhere. You name it, they went and, and they had a ton of donations. It was huge. Be good to see that again or anything. So what do you want to, I know we need to, um, pre-bы laws for it. I'm just thinking of the time period that you've got till, there are any else you need to.
Putting the suggestive motion to advertise and drive to present the votes and.
Okay.
What, I have ideas and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got stuff going on, but.
Yep.
That's all you need, Jesse?
Yep.
I motion to establish a lobster boat race committee and to request the town manager to advertise for members and draft bylaws for the committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to establish, uh, lobster boat race committee. And to request the town manager to advertise for members and draft bylaws for the committee. Any discussion? Should you also reach out to, like, Cooley just to see if there's anything else you should know? I mean, I can do what I just hope you want to do.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Ellen. Next we have Pacific Hall, the one.
Again.
Yeah, Keith, you earmuffs again. I'm sorry. We need.
Uh, so, back before you, discussion on Pacific Hall. Just to remind everybody, um, last time we talked about this, we talked about housing, potential use for housing for the building. I have looked into that, had discussions with the code officer about it. Any multifamily use for the building would require some, um, something changes, major changes, due to the lot size of it, um, and septic system. They could, you could make amendments and make it work, um, but right now it would not conform to a multifamily. You'd only be able to use it as a, as a house, um, which probably isn't what you had in mind as far as housing. So in the meantime, um, I've been approached by a few members from the American Legion, um, Post, um, inquiring about the building. They are looking to sell their Legion building in Southwest due to the size and age of it and the repairs for the needs. They had somebody interested in buying it, um, but they've indicated they may list it for sale if that buyer doesn't come through. But they're inquiring about the use of Pacific Hall for their monthly meetings. We didn't dive into too many details, um, since I told them it's like more than half to discuss it. It sounds like they're open to leasing the building, buying the building. It sounds like they're open to discussing any use of the building. They indicated, you know, they could use the proceeds from selling to maintain this building. So there's obviously parking issues in the building, um, as you know. So they are really focusing on using it for their monthly meeting, which they have six members attend once a month, um, for like a dinner. And it would just need to be, you know, you just run into. And it would just need to be, you know, you just run into, is there gonna be more than six at some point? Is there a way the code officer to approve a use like that and limit it to the, um, because it's gonna cause an issue down the road. Um, I told them I would bring it to your attention and you discuss, what you think.
I would love to see somebody use it.
Yeah, me too.
Wouldn't lie to see someone buy it.
Well, yeah, that's yoga.
I don't think selling it is an option, is it with, because I know Morgan had a, there was a lot of stipulation and stuff.
Um, as far as I know, when I looked at it last time, I thought the town could, but he just has a right to buy it.
Of course you're right.
Right, and if it's something like this, then he might be more apt to agree to that.
Yeah, and American Legion Hall's pretty quiet and pretty, you know. That would be, I would think, a reasonable use for it. It's something, we've looked at everything else under the sun to use it for.
Well, maybe chat with them more, maybe, if we're open to meeting with them.
I think we should.
What about if we just rented it to them first? Just, you know, see how it works, let them use it for a bit and if there's issues, then we'll figure it out then.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
So, I mean, if you wanna look into it, want me to explore it, I would love to have more conversation about what they're thinking, what they wanna do.
Not much.
Yep.
Yeah, just maybe get some more.
It'd be nice if they'd show up at the meeting so we could talk about it.
Yeah.
Yep. Keith, you see any issues?
I haven't heard that.
I'm like, okay, okay, making sure you have your earmuffs on, that's all, yeah, I just-
Quick, move along before he changes his mind. Next.
Last question.
George, you have something? I thought-
I'm just curious, then you're talking about the church next door, where are you?
Yes, yep.
So where are they gonna park?
It would, I mean, it would be the same, there's only six members, so, um-
Oh, you got five of them?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, yep, no.
Most all against the, just put them in my, uh, usually ask them.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
Yep, no, I would think that it, I mean, it actually might be a reasonable use because, um, from a church, you know, obviously it's just, well, you know, it's once a week right there, but it's, um-
Yeah.
But if it's only once every couple of weeks or once a month, it wouldn't be a ton of use, yep.
Put, uh, paid parking on your driveway, how about?
Yeah, that's true, once a year.
The kids use that in the morning, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's good, but your kids. Yeah.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Um, no, I don't think it needs a-
Okay. All right, um, next we have electric vehicle chargers. Um, at the last meeting, we asked Jesse to get a price on metered machines versus non-metered, if I'm saying this correctly.
I, I still-
Yeah.
Uh, yes, so, um, Kevin got, uh, updated proposal from MCM. The proposal you looked at at the last meeting was for, the four free chargers. Um, you indicated at the last meeting that you wanted to focus on putting it all at the Marsh Road, not the Bernard Road block, and to get the pricing on the, what do they call them?
Called a meter.
No, no, the, is it pay for charge or what?
Yeah, yeah, uh, where they pay for the charging, basically, whatever.
Just a section, we'll just get through it.
And then it, the ballards, um, they were brought up at the last meeting to protect them from getting run into. Um, so you can see the proposal, um, was quite a bit more than the free charger, twenty-four ninety-six. Um, the yearly cost for the networking, so to speak, of the chargers to process payments is three hundred and fifty dollars per charger, um, so fourteen hundred if you've got four of them. The grant that the town has available for them is twenty-two thousand dollars. And at the time of typing this memo, um, I reached out to Bar Harbor, as they're the ones with the proceeds. Um, the town of Mountain Desert has indicated they cannot complete their project in time for the end of the grant, so they will not be utilizing their twenty-two thousand dollars off the grant. Somebody said they thought that may mean Bar Harbor and Tremont could absorb Mountain Desert's share. Um, she's not sure, she has to check.
Yeah, I don't think it was written with a specific split on it.
Right, it was written as just the three doing this project and the three determined that they would each get this amount. So potentially, yes, it could be divided up, um, between the remaining towns, um, but I don't have an answer on that yet. I don't know, um, I don't know, Kevin, do you have any information on the, what the charge would be for somebody to charge their vehicle, like the per kilowatt charge, is it a standard, does the town set whatever rate it wants?
You can set the rate, yeah.
So.
Yeah, because they're all different.
Okay. Um, so, your discussion, what you would like to do?
George, have his hand up there.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, they put, they're trying to put electric meters in here, is that a definite thing?
Um, well, it was a, um, a grant that they had signed up for quite some time ago. Um, and they just received the grant money to do it, so that's why it's in front of us now.
So how about putting the grant in for gas, but people are getting in town and some diesel along with it?
Yeah, this would be, what they're talking about on this one is metered, so you'd be charging for it, so it would be just like charging for gas or diesel or whatever.
And what's the, and what about the, uh, danger of somebody's cabin and up in the door, yeah, because the meter goes off or something like that?
Yeah, I don't know much about them, I can't, I don't-
Wouldn't the town be responsible?
Kevin questioned me here.
I think it'd be a hazard to the town.
Yeah.
I don't think it's any more flammable than gasoline.
You say give them wall map, they move the, they move the electrical charges away from the damn building, not hang them off the side of the building. So if something shocks out the cabin, there's, there's a building down.
Yep.
Why not put them down over the hill, like, and put them in charge of it? Why does it have to be hooked to the side of the building?
Oh, it's not-
It's gonna be in a gravel parking lot on Marsh Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, these were in, um, the, you know, what, Murphy Lot or whatever you wanna call it, down there across from the school, across from the Marsh Road, in that dirt parking lot is where they were saying, and, um, they would be a few chargers all together with the, with the, uh, cement like barrier in front of it, so that someone couldn't back into them, run into them, whatever else.
I was just, all I was concerned was more on the side of the building out there.
Yep.
No, they're not gonna be here?
Then you got more alone on the building.
Yep.
And they're paying for them to move?
Yep, yeah, no, no free charging.
Yeah, it's, I don't know-
But why are we getting into selling monitors, the town?
I just would, I don't know enough about it to, like Jesse just asked.
Obviously, it should be a separate entity, you think that sitting in the town, hook up the land itself?
I mean, if Hanson's wanting to put them in, let, let them put them in, get, make the money off it. I mean, the town shouldn't be the ones collecting money for someone's, like-
Maintenance, plowing, the, yeah.
The-
And prior to, prior to the grant, I mean, it's just our money, the grant money is just our money, I mean, it's-
It's not free money.
It's not free money, I don't know why they keep thinking it's free money.
What it means for-
That's true.
Exactly.
Eventually.
Grants are grants, which is our money.
I, I think it's, I think if it did, we think if somebody else would take it over, like you say.
I think it's a stupid idea.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how much, um, it costs to charge is what I was wondering, you know, like how much it is to, because just looking at the difference in the cost of the machines and, uh, and then the subscription for three hundred and fifty dollars, is that per, per unit?
Per unit, yep.
So by the time you did that, I don't even know if you would ever use enough to pay for it either. Like you wouldn't, the price difference between the thirteen thousand and twenty-eight thousand, um, how, I like, I don't-
Well, my truck usually costs me about thirty dollars to charge it.
To charge it?
Yeah, if it's, if it's really low.
So, I mean, it-
So you're looking-
But I mean, can't you charge yours or your house?
I do.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but, I mean, why, what's the benefit, there's, you know, other than being the tourist?
Actually, if someone's working at the school, they can charge while they're at school, you know, a teacher or something like that.
But I mean-
Well, not everyone has a house where they can do it, some people rent.
Well, not a problem.
Even the school buses, they aren't working out either, they're running dry and they have to ship the kids and move it in. I'm not sold on them, I think they're too dangerous. The first thing that's gonna happen, when them school buses with the big batteries in the window is gonna get wet and burned, they're gonna lose your kids in the, in the damn bus. I just, it's just too unknown, it's too soon, I, I would just lay back and wait on that. Let somebody else in town, let Hanson do it, or somebody else. I just, I think it's disgusting, I, I don't like them, I know everybody loves them, but most of them are just somebody who's got extra money to waste. And the batteries, when you get half the life of the car, the batteries die, now you gotta almost buy a brand new car again, so. I think it's disgusting.
No, I'm just curious where, why somebody, you know, resident, whether they folk, you know, wintertime or whatever, why they would go and use the town's charging instead of their own house electricity?
Well, again, a lot of people don't have chargers at home, or these will be a better charger than if you can only plug in with a one-ten outlet. Takes forever to charge with one of those, a lot of people just don't have access to doing it.
Yeah, I'm just-
And it, it costs money to have one installed, I mean, you know, so it's, it may be more reasonable for someone to use a public charger than the expense, and especially if you're running, I mean, that's one of the biggest things that shows up when people are running, but it's also nice if you got someone that's driving electric- I'm not quite done, howdy. Um, it's nice to be able to, if they're driving a long way to school, they could charge a vehicle and get home if they're teaching or something. There are several reasons why they might wanna do it.
What's your story?
Hanson's got plenty of room where they'll find that place now.
If we're gonna put in charging stations, we might as well put in gas pumps.
Keep an eye on them.
Because not everybody has a gas pump at home either.
Keith.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I made my comment last week, but I think, I, I do see where there's a need for, like, your charging, but I think it's already hard enough for the town to, um, find enough people to maintain, there's some derisive or some laws and given that Murphy Law particularly, I don't know, last time they ever got generally maintained. So I just think we have, then we create charging stations, it's just a lot more thing that, you know, local courts have to put on their list to check on a regular basis, or people coming in complaining that they're not working and what kind of investment, but I, my point would be that, I know George and people mentioned fires and air dangers with, um, electric vehicles, but our firefighter currently is gonna be having a training at the end of this month specifically for charging and, and learning the safeties and there is a lot of built-in redundancy, but it does happen, but like Kevin said, it can happen just easy with a, a gas vehicle, but, um, so I don't think they're more prevalent, uh, but when they do start, they're hard put out, but I don't see adding an extra danger at that location. You know, I say that, but, yeah.
Sanding, plumbing, shoveling up the, shoveling up the places from the wind, the wind lands, if they fall down and the town gets sued or somebody gets sued for it, let somebody else do it, we, this town don't need that shit.
Mackenzie, Eric.
Trying to wrap my head around it. So this proposal that's in front of us now for twenty-eight thousand, that's, we wouldn't, if I plug in my car, I have to pay for it myself, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then the town still has to pay fourteen hundred dollars a year just for me to plug in my car, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we only have twenty-two thousand dollars in the grant, so, okay, I'm just trying to make sure I get it all.
I will add, just so you have it for discussion, is you're not stuck with four, I mean, it's whatever the town wants-
Oh, right, right, right.
To do, um, so that's what the price is for four of them.
And you say if we didn't charge people, you could go electrify your truck for thirty dollars? Like if, if I had to plug in my car, bone dry or however you say it, with electric cars, and charge it all the way, how much does that cost?
Um, well, it depends on the size of the car, but probably less, that's gonna be a matter of fact.
I'm just-
Around thirty bucks or less.
Yeah, probably twenty.
I'm just trying to understand.
And how much time?
Uh, these chargers, probably that would take, on my truck would be probably four hours.
Now, what happens when somebody comes along, they park, and somebody else is waiting to use one? I mean, is Jesse gonna be getting the phone call?
Are you down there saying you gotta move? Yeah.
Because you're gonna end up with people calling.
Because that happens out here.
I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, try on the laundromat, and somebody leaving their clothes in the dryer.
Yeah, it's-
Believe me, you get a phone call, someone, someone's using, no, some, somebody's left their clothes in the big dryer and I wanna use it. So it's gonna be the same thing.
I haven't heard of it happening at electric vehicle chargers either, so maybe it'll happen. Um, normally what happens when you get a billable site, it charges you a really elevated rate once your charging's done, if you leave it there, so people don't do it. I mean, it goes up to like ten dollars an hour to park there or thirty or whatever it is, depending on what they set up. Where it's a pay-for-charge thing, they know if you're still plugged in and not charging, you get billed for that time, so people don't do it.
So this money that these people are paying for these charges, how much of that money goes into real tax? Like if you're buying gas?
Not only that, now you're gonna have to have metering, big phone calls, several disputes over charging, all the rest.
You ain't gonna have to worry about your money, you ain't gonna get enough to cover your fourteen hundred or your eight thousand.
That's what I'm worried about. Like, I'm all for putting up the charges, if we don't have to deal with it, we don't have to take care of it, we don't have to like, yeah, well, okay. I don't think they can get a grant, so.
No.
I mean, but, it is, yeah, it's a great spot, I agree with you, yeah. But I agree, like Jesse doesn't need to be out there playing referee over who's parking where and-
I think that's probably a problem, that's not gonna happen, but there are some other issues.
There's drama on this one sometimes, right?
Well, there'll be four of them there and, and, I mean, this is a free one. Once they start getting billed there, it makes a difference.
What if we just did one there instead of here, four, and then it would be less headaches, less, you know, whatever, because of all these, trying to think of a compromise and that.
Well, probably you could actually cut that down a lot, you might as well put in two, you could put them on the same pole and just one ballard in front of it, so everyone seems to be concerned people are gonna run into telephone poles. But, uh, that probably would reduce it a lot.
The old food map, they keep running into those.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
No, I'm not either.
But you could do that with a single ballard and that would reduce it. I think you quoted three on this one.
I mean, we can't afford this one, the one that's in front of us, right?
Now, these got a warranty or anything, so if they do shit bad within the first couple of years, the town's not buying another charging station.
I don't know much they sell, it doesn't have a warranty.
Yeah, I think that we went over it at the last meeting, I think when we were looking at it and it's, um, it said, I wanna say two year or something like that, because I remember that, we were talking about that, and then I wanted to be sure that when- I wanna say two years, something like that, cuz I remember that, we were talking about that, and then I wanted to be sure that when, if something happened to them, that we weren't under an obligation to fix them if we didn't want to, you know, if you didn't, but you weren't, you were not, um.
Yeah, no, that's warranted.
Yeah, what's that?
It does have a warranty.
Yeah, what did it say on it?
It looks like depending on the model, it's two to three.
Oh, okay, yes. Yeah, I told you it's two, some reason, someone asked.
Did you invite the committee?
What's that?
Didn't the committee come last time we talked about this, did you invite them this time? Nobody came.
Guess I'll be watching you.
At least one of them is.
Well, I, beside, I mean, you're taking all the heat, but.
Not the first time.
Y'all take a turn.
I'll tell you what, how about I can make a motion for two of them, and not to exceed twenty-two thousand?
So, I guess I'll chime in, give my two cents.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
I, I definitely agree with the burdens of having, you know, the more maintenance and all that, and just having something, like, we don't need to run a gas station, I get it. And I surely am not gonna pay for it for anyone to go charge, so, if, if it does happen, then the, the fee needs to cover all the other stuff, right, you know, that, that we have to put into it. So we're not gonna send our guys over there for free, you know, to plow it, or sand it, or whatever.
Shoveling.
Fill potholes, you know, and the, whatever the fee is, has to cover our annual expenses. And then, I don't, I, I care less if there's a charger over there, it doesn't really matter to me, um, but, I, I'm not gonna pay for it.
Right.
Um, and I think two would be somewhere where we, we, we might start if we were gonna do it. Um, but, yeah, I, I definitely see the burdens on the town, just having to get the phone calls and stuff like that, and I just don't know how, how much it would be, or how much it wouldn't be, but as long as we're not paying for it, then.
One, one question I had, it came up, talking about people char, paying to charge over there, is the fact that the one on this building is free, so, whatever you install over there is gonna incur an annual fee regardless of if somebody plugs into it or not. So, if nobody uses it all year, we're gonna pay three hundred and fifty dollars per unit, so, my only question is, if usage is love, cuz there's not TVs everywhere, or, or references, if this one's free, and is full every day, because it's free, and those ones are empty because they don't pay, like, they're mirroring, should this one be converted for charge?
Which is another three hundred and fifty dollars.
If a resident, if a resident that uses this one every week on the yard room.
Yeah.
I mean, that one's closer, but he's certainly gonna drive by.
This is free, sure, sure.
This one's free, and he drives all the way over here to use this one, as it is, so.
You're ready for this one?
Um, just a thought.
So if we do the thirteen thousand, it's four of them, we don't charge, it's, we don't pay for anything. We have a grant, right?
Right, but we pay for the electricity.
We pay for the electricity. So we're, I would be totally okay with whatever, as long as the town wasn't putting the bill at some way, and, and I don't know how to get around that some way.
I, I think at this point, the electricity hasn't cost us anything for those, because we, we've got a surplus. If I'm, unless I'm mistaken on that.
Well, we, cuz we don't own the array, so we still have to pay, it just costs us less to pay for it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true.
We do still pay twelve cents for everything that's on the solar.
But we would get reimbursed for the electricity there, but we don't bank enough electricity to put the fire department on our solar array?
To my understanding, the reason it wasn't was because it's not a town-owned building.
Oh, okay.
Well, we still should consider.
Everything else is owned, the meter isn't in our name, if the town would treat it as a name.
Yeah.
I see, okay, all right, I got it, okay. I agree, like, I, I have a hard time giving out free stuff when lots of people in our community struggle as it is. But I do see the need, I think it is up and coming, I just don't know if we're there yet, but.
Jamie, what did it cost, I think you had Blangill or whatever come down, didn't they put a pole in for you on Hammond Ledge?
Yep.
What?
Thirty-five hundred dollars for the pole and no ledge, there was no, that was just straight more on that one.
Oh, okay, I thought they'd hit ledge, cuz I know this costs you a fair amount.
Yes, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Fair amount with ledge.
Yep.
Cuz it says that price doesn't include ledge.
Yep. No, that's what it was, that's what I did last fall.
Yeah, I just don't think that, um, I don't think you'll ever, at this point in the town, I don't think you're gonna pay for the monthly fee, you know, I just don't think that, if it's seven hundred dollars a year, just say for two of them, um, I don't believe you'll bring in enough revenue to, to cover that, let alone cover, um, you know, anything else, like, any of that.
I think seven hundred you could probably cover.
You think so?
I could be wrong, but, I don't think that would be that hard to cover.
Yeah, I would just go off the math of like, you know, like you said, twenty, thirty bucks of, a fill-up, whatever you wanna call it.
We ply that lot anyway, right? So that's, applying the laws, not an agreement that's being done anyway.
Does the school pack over there a fair amount?
Yeah.
Yep.
And in the summer, aren't there trailers and things over there sometimes? Sometimes, or?
It's the pickup for the Island Explorer in the summer.
It is, it must stop, too, yeah.
Fair amount of vehicles packed, though.
So do you think you'll get?
More in the evenings than during the day, I don't see too many parked there during the day, but they just get used at events.
Yeah, when I cross the road, it was having there, I think that's when it was full.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was more it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure in the summertime that they would be used all the time, just with all the tourists and stuff, but then you become a gas station again.
For chores.
We're not trying to run a business on it, we're, if, if anything, it was, you know, to make convenience for locals that have these vehicles. But then you turn into trying to run a business on selling power, and that's, I don't know.
If it's that good a deal, let somebody else take, put it down, let them charge for it, and let them have their own business.
Right.
The town's not. It's like the town being an Airbnb and that stuff.
They got somebody down there that answers most all the time, somebody that'll watch it, you're gonna have to babysit. I used to have babysitting in there, you're gonna run into some money and problems, cuz you're gonna be, somebody gonna be running down there for someone twenty-four seven. Because always somebody gonna leave their car there, it's gonna be left there, and, what are you gonna tie?
Oh, they're gonna leave a plug in and back, I believe.
Well, the lawyer.
The cord in there, I see somebody do that at the gas pumps.
Pain in the neck, we don't need, this town don't need that.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve EV charging proposal from MCM Electric with reducing it to two chargers, and reducing the number of bollards involved, and not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars for charging stations at the Murphy Lot on the Marsh Road.
Well, I'll second, just so we can try.
Sweet and chat.
Just try and see if it works.
What was it, what else did you say?
Twenty-two thousand, that's what we got.
So if the grant money pays for this, and it doesn't work out after the first year or two, hang on a second here.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the EV charger proposal from MCM with a modification to include only two chargers, and not to exceed, um, twenty-two thousand dollars for stations at the Murphy Lot on the Marsh Road. Is there any discussion?
So, if the grant money pays for this, town's not paying for it upfront, and the warranty is two years, correct, roughly?
But we still have to pay fourteen hundred, no, sorry, seven hundred dollars a year.
Well, the price has to be set per whatever kilowatt or whatever, so.
No, well, that's, that's just a maintenance fee for, to have the chargers here.
Well, for the billing.
Right.
It handles all the billing.
Yeah, right, but.
Plus we all got to pay the grant.
So now, is the free one gonna be taken off?
Should be.
Hang on.
Free one should be taken off if you're charging for one over there, it's not fair, we're paying for it, one way or the other, we're paying for it, should be gone.
Well, there's a motion that doesn't include that at this point, I, I think that's a really valid argument, though. It should be paid for if the others are.
So you're proposing to pay, people will have to pay to use those, these two, okay?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, any more, anything else?
So if it doesn't work out, we can yank them.
Yeah.
Right? Without spending money on them, is what I'm getting at.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cuz Jesse, you said that we set the price per whatever it is, per gallon. So, that price, whatever that price is, we need to.
We have to cover the electricity.
Yeah, all, all, annual fees and all that, and if it doesn't, then yank them.
Electricity and the annual fee. Yeah.
So we can't, we can set that, we can make sure that you set it correctly to cover?
That's what Kevin.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Cuz I mean, the, the rates are different everywhere you go, so they set them locally.
Right, so we need to do some research with people that actually run these things, and see what the price needs to be to cover the fees, cuz we're not paying for them.
Yep.
We have to make up our minds on May fifteenth, though, we don't have a lot of research time.
They're gonna take that day off.
Yeah, right?
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Okay. Next, we have town manager's report.
Uh, over the last couple weeks, I attended the legal town meeting, I was a panelist on the Island Institute, um, webinar about the storm damage uh, from January, I attended a FEMA Zoom update on the, um, public assistance funding that was approved by the president for the storm damage, and filed our request for that with FEMA. I attended the Harvard committee meeting, I attended an all-day managers conference in Bangor, and worked on meeting prep. Uh, the clerk's been busy with election prep, B and B reports, uh, working on the annual report, and lean discharges. Public Works was busy with storm prep, um, putting weight on, Sandra and Plow came on truck nine, um, that got towed to Bangor today. It's having a major issue with the DEF system, um, and it's in, like, all involved, and, um, the ordinance couldn't get it to come out of it. So it's been towed to Bangor, um, received two more salt deliveries, and had the snowstorm last, um, Thursday. Harbor Master attended the Harvard committee meeting, uh, worked on float launch schedule, processed warrant payments, finished float work by the school, bleached the velo ram, uh, removed windows from the warp house, um, was there when the warp house was removed. Float work, um, on the seafloor floats, uh, storm prep on the seaflopes in the harbor, and more and more bills, um, processing. And, um, for the next couple of weeks, I will be away on vacation.
Suggestions for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to put in some gas pumps over there.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Diesel, please.
Diesel and gas.
Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, April twenty-second, at five p.m. at the town office.
So. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, five p.m. at the town office, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have an executive session titled consultation with legal counsel.
I make a motion to go into executive session for consultation between the board and its attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot E.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session titled consultation with legal counsel, as read by Kevin, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Is legal counsel invisible?
It's probably gonna show up big on that screen, or something.
Okay, we are out of executive session at six twenty-five.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to hire an attorney to represent the planning board on pending applications.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to hire an attorney to represent the planning board on pending applications, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Motion to adjourn, Howdy?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, making sure.